I'd like to call to order the August 5, 2014, regular meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Invite you to stand if you wish. I'll provide the invocation and I pledge allegiance. Father, we thank you for another wonderful day in Bowling Green. We pray that you'll give us wisdom as we consider the issues before us and guide us in the right decisions to make. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Want to welcome our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Jackson, being with us tonight. Would you please call the roll?
Ashley Jackson.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here.
Glad to have you back. Hope Ms. Claire is fine tonight. Do we have any awards or recognitions, Mr. Phil?
I have none.
Anyone on the commission have a comment? I do have, if I can find it, word up at the list of retirements. Is it just the one, Mike? Want to wish a warm welcome to our Chief Building Inspector, Glenn Burns, who has retired after many, many, many years. Wish him well in his new endeavor. Understand that traveling is going to be his next passion, so hope he enjoys that. Mr. Philbo, you have any comments tonight?
Yes, there'll be a need for executive session. Ms. Jackson will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 618101(c) for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the city.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Any other comments, Mr. Philbo?
No, none.
Approval of amendments for the regular meeting on July 15, 2014?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denning. Any comments or corrections? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. The city provides an opportunity for the public to step forward and make any comments on an item that may not be on tonight's agenda. Is anyone in the room that would like to do that? Seeing no one, we'll go on to the second reading of ordinance BG 2014-12 as amended.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances, ordinance amending chapters II Administration and 27 Property Code of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances to adopt recommended changes from the Citizens Committee established to review the city's property code and changes recommended by the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. This is the second reading. Is there any further discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Now, the next two items are related. Last commission meeting that we took this up, it was on, we'd skipped one meeting to allow the owner to be here this evening, but the second readings for both BG 2014-20 and 20A are related. As I understand, Jean, why don't you just walk us through the steps on this?
Motion, second, first, get them before you.
Well, you understand, we have to have a motion and a second on the first one in order to consider it.
But I can go ahead if you want to on both?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. As Mayor said, it has been a while. I guess it's five weeks ago when we first talking about these ordinances. At that time, you had one ordinance on the agenda that approved the rezoning of this property on Parkhurst. I think it was recommended for approval only by seven to five vote by Planning Commission. At that meeting, this Board of Commissioners turned down that recommendation from Planning Commission as advised to you at that time. You simply can't vote no on Planning Commission recommendation. You had to make your own independent findings of fact and conclusions. You then introduced and adopted a second ordinance denying the rezoning. Historically, the City of Bowling Green has always voted on ordinances on first reading. By law, we're not required to, so it's only the second reading and the vote on the second reading that counts. That is why you have both of the ordinances before you again tonight. Again, the same as five weeks ago, on the first ordinance is the ordinance approving the rezoning. You can simply approve that rezoning if you want after tonight's discussion, if you choose to do that, at which time there won't be a need for the second ordinance. But just like the first time, if you wish not to approve the rezoning, then you have the ability to vote that one down and then reconsider the second one that we adopted five weeks ago that would deny the rezoning. I will let you know the property owner is here in attendance. I met with him a few days ago, and I'm sure he'd like to address you. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them if I can.
All right, so we'll need the consideration then for ordinance BG 2014-20.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.34 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to GB general business located at 1552 Parkhurst Drive presently owned by, and I apologize, I'm not sure how to pronounce the name.
To.
Klatch. Thank you.
Toyo Klatch.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, and now I'll open the floor for discussion. I believe Mr., I'm sorry, I already asked Jake?
Klatch.
Klatch. Klatch has some comments for us.
Sure.
Mr. Klatch, we, however, considering this is that we're not reopening the case for additional evidence and so forth. We're allowing you to summarize your comments from the previous meeting so we understand what your issues are, so please go ahead.
I apologize for not being here last time.
No problem.
My family had a Disney World vacation, and it was pre-planned, so I didn't realize that there would be a discussion. I watched the video, and it seems that the main concern was the nature of the business, what I'm planning to do. And what I'm planning to do, it's going to be just a small business. If you look on your exhibit that I enclosed, the one that actually has the house. What I'm proposing, that's correct, uh-huh. What I'm planning to do is basically build a little workshop for the picture frame business and to sell the arts and crafts from local artists here in town in Bowling Green. So it will be a small business that will have no impact on the neighborhood. I will probably employ several people, so it will create jobs and create revenue for the City of Bowling Green through payroll tax. It will also create revenue to the state of Kentucky through the sale tax. I will improve the property further, which will increase the property value and create additional revenue for the City of Bowling Green as well. As far as the, you know, the neighborhood, there will be no pollution, no noise. It will not affect the neighborhood in any way. I'll basically be invisible. I know that sometimes when it comes to, you know, zoning issues as rezoning from, you know, residential to general business, that's why I met with Planning and Zoning on several occasions trying to decide, because I wasn't sure at first, you know, exactly what kind of business I would do in the neighborhood, something that would benefit the community. And at the actual meeting, I think that's why there was some discussion with the actual planning and zoning, was I was not finalized as far as exactly what kind of business I was planning to do. So there was some discussion, and someone actually told me later that I was maybe not precise and that I was a little bit, you know, unclear, and that's, I think, why some, several members voted, you know, against it. But I believe, you know, if I told them the actual business, that everybody would have recommended it. But nevertheless, the planning and zoning has recommended that the property be rezoned. And basically, I thought that that was the actual approval. I didn't realize that it has to go one step in front of the, you know, City Commission. As far as the, you know, the, I think some other issue that some, you have maybe pointed in the last meeting was the future planning and zoning map, and it's pretty consistent because all around me, everyone is a business. And if you look the actual, the second map, you will see that three adjoining properties to me are all zoned business, general business. And also, the property that has an X was, which is the property adjoining me, was zoned residential M3 as mine, and it was rezoned several months ago to general business. That's what I'm trying to do, and I thought that would be the appropriate zoning. And as far also as the binding elements, I actually use the binding elements from my neighbor, and they're almost identical. But, you know, if the Planning Commission, I mean, if you feel that I would need to amend or change anything, I would be glad to do it. If you feel that, you know, there's no vote or support for this, but I basically feel that Bowling Green has always been good to small businesses, and that's why I think the community is strong, is to support and grow small businesses, not just the big business. Because big business just looks the place to be at some time, and then later they may move, and if the city relies on just big business, then that city finds itself in trouble if it just have few large employers. And that you can see all over different towns in the Midwest that relied heavily on certain industries and a few large employers. So again, I would like you to support me in starting a new business in Bowling Green, where I will also support local artists and craftsmen, and I would appreciate it if you would help me. And I would also, would like to invite you to come to the ribbon cutting ceremony once I open the business.
There's some documents up here. There are two large, two large maps. Are these from you?
That is actually from the planning and zoning that I used.
Do you know what this X is for next to?
I do. That's the property that was rezoned from residential M3 to general business. That's the property that's adjoining my property. My property is the one that has the blue rectangle around it. And the city, you approved that zoning a couple months ago, which is basically the property next to me. The same type of zoning, I use the same binding elements. And I also forgot to mention, I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the neighborhood was okay with it. I know there was an ad that gets put in the paper and the media, people are contacted, but I actually went a step further. I actually went and talked to all the people on my street, and those are the signatures. I have over 100 signatures, over 100 homeowners, and people who live in the community have full, and know exactly what I'm planning to do, and they're giving me a full support. And that's not just the actual Parkhurst, there's actually additional two streets, which is North Sunrise and South Sunrise, as well as another street which is below me. So that's probably over a mile radius, and those are the actual homeowners and people who live in the area, and actually were asking me when I'm going to open the business, so they would like to come and buy these arts and crafts that again will be made by local artists in the community, so.
Had you, in your earlier presentation to planning and zoning, had you presented as a part of your proposal what you were going to do? Would that have helped you tremendously, and we wouldn't be at this point we are now?
Yes, sir. What happened is I never, you know, been to any of the planning and zoning actual meetings, and I have not experienced the actual process. And I basically was unprepared. And at the time, you know, I had several ideas, and I was not 100% sure what type of business I was going to put there. So when they asked me, I was not, you know, basic, I really was not 100% sure exactly what kind of business I was planning to do, because I wanted to do something that I love to do, something that there is a need in the community, and also something that I would not compete with the big box stores. So it had to be something that's, you know, unique and.
And that scared the community by you not being able to do that at that time. I think that's where the concern started.
That is correct. That was the concern of, I believe, the mayor and several other people, but now, you know, you know exactly what I'm planning to do, and like I said, I talked to all my neighbors, and there's over, like I said, 100 signatures on the, that I just gave you there.
And I'm sorry, on the maps we have, it does not have the street addresses, but are you saying that all of the residents across, around your business have signed this?
That's correct. The addresses are on the, it shows you the streets on the map, that I'm on a Parkhurst Drive. I basically talk to almost everybody. I went there several times, and they all fully support me. And I talk to actually people that are the street next to me, which is North Sunrise, and I also talk to the people that are below me, which is South Sunrise, and basically on four streets that are in that area, basically almost over 100 homes.
One more question.
Sure.
Mr. Hill, now you're coming to us and saying, you know, you want to open the frame shop and art gallery. How do we know that you leave here tonight, you're not going to change your mind and do another business?
We can, I mean, we can put that in a binding elements, or, I mean, the actual, how would I put it, the planning and zoning, you know, when I was trying to see, the actual code, what I'm applying to dictates me what kind of business, you know, I'm going to put in the area. So I cannot really put any type of business that's not in accordance with the classification, in this case, general business, which is the smallest type of a retail business that, you know, I'm allowed to do by law. So the actual general business designation determines what kind of business I can put, but the business that I will put will be basically, like you said, an art gallery slash unique arts and crafts by local artists.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
A concern that I have is the encroachment in the neighborhood on a Parkhurst. Could you, and I don't know if you can address it, but what if the, next week, the property next to you wants to be rezoned general business, and they use yours as an example because it passed, and then the next one wants to, and then where do we, I mean, where do we stop into the neighborhood?
Sure, right. I understand that, and I thought actually, because I listened, actually, that was one of the points raised in the last meeting, and I appreciate your concern, and yeah, where's the, where it's going to stop? I understand that. Basically, I'm actually not the last property that's zoned business, because on this map, if you further, if you go further north on a Parkhurst, actually, property to me is residential, then another property is residential, and that square, RM3, in the words, that big lot, that property is rezoned commercial.
That's right.
And currently is used as a church, but actual zoning classification is commercial. So I'm not the last property there's, that's a commercial on that street. And also, I do want to point out that, you know, I worked with planning and zoning, and, you know, they felt that it would be appropriate for the community and for this type of change to be made that would not affect the community.
One more question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
In the property that would be right next door to you, not the one that's already been zoned general business, the other one, they have signed this petition?
Yes, my, actually, the neighbor, his wife had a stroke, and I was trying to catch him, but yes, he will sign it.
Oh, he has not signed it?
He has not signed it as of right now, but he will sign it. Yes, we are very good friends, the Millers, but the wife had a stroke, and he's basically with her all the time. That is correct, yes. If you, like I said, it just, I didn't, I was out of town, I didn't have time, and I just basically worked these last few days.
Is he the homeowner?
He's the homeowner, that is correct. And if you require his signature, we can put that in the, you know, conditions for this to be approved. He will sign it. I was trying to get, I saw him today, but I don't know if he was asleep or knocked on his door, and he didn't answer. But Miller, the gentleman that lives next door, he will sign it for sure, yes. I can guarantee you that.
If I might, go back to Melinda's question just a second. Yeah, I know you're before us tonight, you're saying you're going to put in a frame shop.
That is correct.
Art gallery, things of that nature, but if we rezon this as general business, there's really no guarantee that it has to remain.
Well, I mean.
As such, is that, is that true?
Well, I'll get Steve up here to talk as well. The binding elements, least these provided, and I think these are accurate, the binding elements that they approved with the Planning Commission restricted and said certain things could not be put in there, fuel stations or fuel cells, bingo parlors, pornography, adult stores, adult entertainment, you know, they prohibited those uses, but the current binding elements provides that any other use that's consistent with general business is acceptable.
If.
And generally, excuse me, just one second, you know, generally, the City Commission does not get involved, and I'm not sure if I ever recall amending binding elements, that's a duty and responsibility of the Planning Commission, and it would've been nice if this could be done, it'd been done there instead of here. It was, yeah, I'd have to, make it Steve's help to see whether we even have the authority to amend binding elements, and that's basically a prerogative of the Planning Commission. And Steve, you'll probably also answer the question about what else is allowed for the general business use. There's a number of other things, of course, that are.
Mr. Williams, if there's any concern on your part, I'll be glad to amend binding elements to list the businesses that maybe would not be good for the neighborhood, and I can do that, you know, that would be fine. You know, I cannot guarantee that, you know, that that will be the business, that's what I will try to do, and I'm hoping it will be successful.
I completely believe what you're saying. The only thing is, you know, if you were to sell the property, it would still be defined general business.
Right.
And then if someone else came in, they may decide to do something different than what you're doing.
That is correct, but that's why there is that GB zoning, that's what, that's where we have the enforcement of the actual designation for the property, so I can, you know, let's say the property is sold, you know, there's no guarantee for anyone.
Correct.
That has certain type of zoning. So if the property is zoned for general business, they can only put general business as designated by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which, you know, as I mentioned earlier, approved and recommended that this property be approved for the change for the neighborhood. And like I said, I had not one person in the neighborhood that objected me rezoning it, and I have, like I said, over 100 homeowners and people who live in the community who have signed and that fully support me. But if you feel that it was a, I don't know, do you have any certain kind of business that you have in mind that you don't think would be appropriate for the neighborhood?
Well, back to, back to what Bill brought up, we're talking about moving further up into the neighborhood. There might be some types of businesses that would fall under general business that might not work so well with the neighbors as what you're putting in. Yeah, I'd like to hear maybe from, from Steve Hunter about what other businesses might fall under GB?
We can, we can pull that, it's online, the, under Planning and Zoning. It's basically a small retail, nothing that's, you know.
Come on up, Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Hunter's right behind you.
Okay.
Let Mr. Hunter come to the microphone if you don't mind, sir. Thank you. So the question is what could happen, what we could do in general business?
Well, I know there are a lot of things that would fall under general business.
Sure.
And, you know, I don't question his, you know, his plans. Now, I'm just want everyone to be aware of what could come in there under general business.
Sure. Well, general business is pretty broad. Our commercial category is basically our neighborhood business, central business, general business, and highway business. Neighborhood business is the most limiting because it's not really the uses, but it's the scale. Can't have a building over 4,000 square foot, your signage is fairly small, your lock coverage is less, your green space is more, you know, the kind of odd trade-off there. General business is wide open, except for basically fast food. So the easiest way, if you're asking me, what's highway business, what's general business, anything you think of in the city that's retail, anything, bars, restaurants, car lots, taxidermy, upholstery shop, you can about do anything you want in general business, but when you get to drive-throughs, which typically are fast food or a convenience store with a drive-through, then you're always highway business. There's some highway business things that would be required, big boxes, big retail outlets, but general business pretty much allows any retail that I can think of other than fast food or big boxes, big shopping centers. The challenge here, as you heard To say, is when he came to us, he didn't know what he's going to do. We did recommend neighborhood business. I mean, he started off with highway business, and he kicked around some different uses to us, and that was a concern for us, and we said, you know, if vehicle repairs in the near future, we don't think it's appropriate. Then he said, well, I'm not sure if it's a vehicle repair, it may be this, I may want to rent as an apartment. That's what really changed the whole zoning category was, he wanted a category that allowed him retail flexibility, but if he wanted to continue to live there or rent and stay in a residential category, general business was the best category to allow all those opportunities. And he had, he just didn't know, and he said, but you know, if I want to still live there, had he zoned highway business, he couldn't reside there.
I live at the conference.
He lives there too.
And, you know, I'm in the neighborhood, I'm not planning to put any kind of business that I would want to be, you know, a person, having a family or at home, that's exactly right.
But, you know, and so, you know, honestly, we don't pick the zoning districts, we let applicants do that. We try to guide them in the early stages, but it's their application. They, they put their binding elements forward on their own accord, and we try to tweak them if there's a major hiccup. And by the way, these prohibited uses, I said this to the planning, so I'm not sure what's wrong with bingo, but, you know, bingo's always on that prohibited list, because we don't want bingo anywhere, but. But, but it is a little, there is a few facts here that were not exactly conveyed, maybe. He's not retail on all sides. He was only retail on the one side that was recently zoned. And the property that was recently zoned had some unique circumstances with it too that haven't been mentioned, and part of it was that property was split zoned. So when that property owner next door came to the Planning Commission, part of his justification was, look, I'm already zoned a sliver commercial, and I could squeeze this building up by the road, but it wouldn't look very attractive, but if I zoned the whole parcel, I could scoot it back and it'd be a better business site, because clearly, the future land use map was not in compliance with either site. But I think the Planning Commission, in looking at the neighboring property, was it's already half zoned commercial, and it was zoned on more sides commercial, but clearly, the future land use map, which is supposed to tell us what the future and protect encroachments in the neighborhood showed, this all is moderate density. But, you know, again, I think after we zoned the one next door, then this gentleman came in and said, hey, I want to basically zone my property too, and he's right, he used virtually the same binding elements, although there's three differences in them, they're not exactly the same, but they were basically the same model that were used for the neighboring property. And at this point, the neighboring property has not developed, and if you drove by, I'm not sure what's happening there, and it's already in violation of a couple binding elements. So sure, there's going to be some business uses there, but at some point, I think it's a valid concern, is when do they stop? And is the next neighbor going to come in and say, hey, I also would like to do commercial? There is no other commercial up the street. The church is up there, but it's in multifamily zoning. There is no other retail up the street unless it's an illegal use or an existing use in multifamily.
The.
It's multifamily. It's allowed.
I have a couple questions.
Sure.
On your page six of nine, which is the existing land use.
That's existing land use, correct.
The, one of the colors I can see is black.
Sure.
There's some black there. What does that mean?
Bacon.
There's nothing on it?
I forgot you have trouble seeing these.
There's, but there's no, it's just.
Bacon.
Empty land.
Bacon, bacon land, correct.
But what's the zoning?
RM2, or, I'm sorry, RM3.
RM3, okay.
RM3. Now, the one exactly across the street that's an odd-shaped triangle has the little tip that's zoned commercial, you barely can see it.
That matches the straight line across there.
Exactly. The original zoning for that area was a straight line across North Sunrise and Parkhurst.
I understand.
As you move out, up Parkhurst, everything is zoned RM3, which would allow for three to eight apartments or single family.
So as it's zoned now, right now, we could, if we voted for this, he could put in his frame shop if we approved it.
Sure.
Or we don't do anything, he can put in apartments.
He could do apartments.
Already.
Without us doing. RM3 also would allow some other uses with a condition use permit, a church, a daycare, group living. There's other things you can do in RM3, but you might have to get a condition use permit in addition to your RM3 zoning. The most limiting thing is the lock coverage is less, you know, RM3 has less lock coverage than commercial.
So is the issue, encroachment, what is the issue? I'm getting confused.
Well, I can't really figure out if, I trended an issue that night, I mean, it was six-four vote, there was a lot of discussion about hours of operation, proposed use, you know, how things were going to fit compatibility-wise in the neighborhood. The Planning Commission has an interesting challenge, they have the future land use map as a guide, but there's a provision in the conference plan that allows us to use compatibility as a standard to review the case. So if your binding elements are good enough, it kind of trumps the map. So some of the. So some of the Planning Commissioners may just thought it wasn't in compliance with the map, and we should follow the map. Some may have thought the binding elements weren't strong enough. Obviously, six thought the binding elements were good enough, because clearly, it wasn't in compliance with the map. But I, I don't know exactly what the four no votes were related to.
But just so I understand, during that planning zoning meeting, they did not know the type of business he moved open?
They did not.
Is that correct?
There's a lot of discussion, they did not know.
Okay. And just so I understand, Steve, on this map we were given, there's a rectangle drawn in, hand-drawn, will you remind, you drew that in? Okay, what is?
That's where I'm planning to put.
Actually build a shop?
Build a shop, yes.
Okay.
That would be the actual building, behind the house.
And you live in this house currently?
I live in the house, so I'm not planning to do anything, you know, to disrupt it in the neighborhood. There'll be zero effect on the neighborhood, there'll be no footprint, the traffic in this town business is very slow. And you did a great job actually, the district was enlarged, the water line was cleared, the water hydrant.
Steve, on the lot that was referenced as being the next lot down that's lending its credibility to, to make this change, is it owned by either of the two lots that it touches on Old Morgantown Road?
It does. The very lot on the corner, that's also zoned commercial, that it's not attached, it's owned by the next lot over that's zoned multifamily. The bigger lot on Morgantown Road, which would be.
Where the house is.
Where the house is.
That's, that's the same owner.
Yeah, and, and again, it is an odd scenario. That owner basically wanted to build a garage initially on this back lot. And, and our simplest solution was, hey, just take your lot line out, build a garage, because you're already, you own both lots, and you can build your garage. But then he said, well, look, what if I wanted to run a business out of my garage? We said, well, then you need to zone commercial. So his initial plan was to zone it all commercial, so he might be able to run a business out of the house or the garage. We were saying, hey, if you just want to build a garage for your stuff, just take your lot line out, build a garage. So he's zoned commercial, and what he's done is he built a garage. If you go over there, he's basically built a standalone garage, gravelled the front, and at this point, I don't see any indication of any business, he's using it as a garage for his personal residence, which is allowed.
So a garage is for storing cars, not a car repair shop?
No, it's just a garage for his, his residence.
Could he put a car repair shop in?
He couldn't.
So you could do that in the general business category?
You could do vehicle repair.
Okay.
And you, or vehicle sales. Probably not likely, you don't see as much vehicle repair, it could be vehicle sales, you know, tint windows, whatever you would want to do, something like that.
Yes, sir.
Explain again what you, I don't understand what you talked about, lot coverage is less for general business than multifamily, or, what did you say?
Multifamily is less. Lot coverage is kind of run up the, the hill, if you think about it, with the zoning classifications. Neighborhood business is less, single family's less than RM2, RM2 is less than RM3, it's less than RM4. And as you go up the commercial chain, the lot coverages get more intense as we go all the way up to highway business. So RM3 right now typically has a lot coverage around 75%. If you went RM4, it's 90%. If you go commercial, you're at 90 or 95% lot coverage. So you can cover up the lot in pavement, parking.
RM3 is currently what?
About 75. It, it's going to vary on your landscape needs. If you have the landscape and the way you design your parking, you may not get the 75%. So at this point, again, the, the general business is, would allow exactly the use he wants. Mr. Moore may want to address this binding element issue, I heard you guys mention changing binding elements. I'm not aware we've ever done that in this forum, but we had, had applicants decide another approach, different binding elements, and they've withdrawn their case and gone back to the Planning Commission with a new general development plan. I, I know we've done that before, not at your urging, just something came up where a binding element was needed. And I think the way we handled that was, the applicant basically refiled their application with a new 13 binding elements or whatnot.
Because he needs to understand, if it is rejected, there's a time period before he can come back. But he can simply withdraw it.
I'm sorry.
And, you know, he can simply withdraw, go back to the Planning Commission with another application and start basically anew.
But I don't understand, you know, why, because, I mean, if you feel that, you know, I can change the binding elements, I can do that.
Because I think I'm going to recommend to them not to, to change binding elements at this, at this level. Binding elements need to be discussed and changed.
Right.
The Planning Commission is not here.
Oh, I see. But what I'm trying to say, my binding elements are the same as the gentleman next door, you know, and I'm not going to put no car repair, I'm not a mechanic, I'm not going to put, again, any kind of business. What are the concerns?
But one thing you need to, if you, if you would understand this, this is not just affecting you and your business. This is affecting this piece of property from now on.
Right, right.
So if you were to, if you were to move, or you were to sell that piece of property, the next person that comes in could do something totally different than what you're planning to do.
Sure, I understand, Mr. Williams. But I want to point out, like the gentleman from the Planning and Zoning was talking about, the actual lot coverage and those issues, and the lot and the size of that land and the house, there is really no room to do any kind of businesses, auto repair or car sales. So really, it's, the, the piece of land is dictating what can actually be do, done with it. And it's, and so, you know, in a way, there's very little, very few kinds of businesses that can be put in that, you know, location. And again, the, I'm not sure if, does that addresses your concern, Mr. Williams?
Okay. Gene?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Before we get more totally confused, what have we got going on here?
Well, right now, at one time, he has proposed maybe amending his binding elements, I'm not sure how far. At one time, he said even to put a binding element, that he'd do nothing else than a frame shop. I, I don't think the City Commission, the Board of Commissioners is the appropriate place for us to be amending binding elements from the floor. That needed to be done at the Planning Commission. That was the suggestion a minute ago, that what he may want to think about doing, and we may get his ear here in a minute, if he wants to make this a easier sale to everybody, and he wants to impose additional binding elements, his suggestion may be to withdraw this application, file a new application with the Planning Commission with additional binding elements, and start all over again. He can do that without any recourse. If you all vote this rezoning down tonight, then there's a period in time in which he cannot come back in and rezon, and so he's stuck for a while. But I just don't think that this Board of Commissioners is the place for us to be debating and approving changes to binding elements. That should have been done at the Planning Commission. And I don't, I can't recommend to you all that you all agree to change the binding elements from here.
Do, but do.
Which is the question at hand. In other words, this particular, what we're talking about here right now, there's a request to change the binding elements?
He has proposed that he may do that, there's already approved binding elements from the Planning Commission. The only thing it did, it said there cannot be three or four prohibited uses, like bingo parlors and adult entertainment and gas stations.
So what is your recommendation as to what we do right now on what we're?
I think you vote right now on the recommendation for you by the Planning Commission along with their approved binding elements.
If we approve what's on the floor now, item number two on our agenda, if we approve that, it automatically does away with item number three, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And just so I understand, Mr. Hunter, if you don't mind. Currently, the way this property is zoned, how many people could live on that property if he chose to do that?
Well, I'd speculate here, but you could do three to eight apartments. I don't know how many bedrooms each apartment could have, I don't know the nature of the structure, but let's just say a structure came down and we build an eight-plex. Some could have two bedrooms, three bedrooms, four bedrooms, five bedrooms. But then that, that relationship affects parking. There's guest parking, so a one-bedroom apartments would have one and a half spaces, two bedrooms, 2.25. So it's all going to come down, like every apartment complex, you're going to get as many apartments slash bedrooms as you can fit the parking for. So could an eight-plex fix or fit, I don't know. It may be with one bedrooms and a combination of two, but if you did three, four, or five bedroom units, I doubt you're going to make the parking, lot coverage, landscaping, drainage work.
But if those are apartments, those cars are going to be there all hours, because they're going to sleep there most likely, correct? So there's going to be a lot larger traffic impact?
That's right. Then what I'm trying to do, which.
That's exactly, exactly right, because I'm not planning to build apartments and increase traffic flow. I'm actually living on, in the house, and I'm just going to build, like I said, a little.
I can tell you, as a property owner, I would much rather you have your frame shop behind your house.
Thank you.
And be my neighbor.
Thank you.
And have eight apartments next door to it.
Thank you.
And I ordered. Yes, sir.
I agree with what Melinda just said. I'm probably going to vote yes to approve this. However, however, I want to make it clear for a number of reasons. One, planning and zoning approval means something, the binding elements mean something.
Thank you.
But what I want to make clear, and I don't have many more months in this seat, but what I want to make clear is that by my, by a yes vote, I would not bind myself to approve the next property, is what I'm, I just want to make clear.
Thank you.
This stands on its own, so, for whatever that's worth.
Thank you. Can I just get one more vote, please?
I feel it's on a TV show.
You better get three.
May I say one?
And Mr. Denning, can I get your support?
I hope you understand that, that the questions that I've asked tonight are out of concern for not what you're trying to do, but what could be done with this piece of property in the future by another owner. So that's the impetus of my questions. I fully support, and I think what you're doing is a good thing.
Thank you, Saul. I appreciate it.
That's why I'm asking the question.
But I, I'm not planning to move, I'm not planning to sell the property, I love living in Bowling Green, so hopefully, you know, I'll be the only person for the next 50 years at that residence.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Yes, just one lesson, not going to cost you anything other than listening. When you go before planning and zoning, have all your ducks lined up. Don't give any indication to those people that sit on that board that some fishy is going on. You tell them what you're going to do, what you're going to build, how many cats you're going to have, whatever you're going to have.
Yes, sir, I agree. And like I said, I never went through this process, and it was my mistake.
And I understand.
And I was trying to save money, I didn't even hire an attorney, and.
And we, we understand, we have an appreciation that there may, may be some things you don't understand, but in cases like this, get someone to help you that does understand.
Thank you very much for your support.
And just lastly, our concern in denying it the first time was based on some, our, our concern for the neighborhood and the encroachment that business does move into that area. Because once you start down that line, then people are going to use, like Rick said, that's saying, I mean, Bill said is the, you know, well, then that guy got zoning, then that guy got zoning. So our concern is to preserve and protect long-established neighborhoods, so I think, I think your information tonight was helpful in guiding us in our decision.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate your support.
Any other comments or discussion? Anything to add to this?
Just to make sure if I understand, you're now voting on ordinance BG 2014-20. If you vote yes on this one, this will approve the rezoning, accept the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Everybody understand what we're doing? Please call the roll.
Hill? Yes. Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
So that makes item number three moot. Withdraw, please.
Say what?
Item number three, which would be to deny the zoning, is now moot, so it's over.
So was that a first reading on the ordinance?
That was a second. That was, because we did both ordinances the previous time. We did both first readings.
This is the second reading of the first one, and he just withdrew the second one.
All right, now municipal order 2014-156.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Watheta Buford, Matt Edwards, and Clay Smalley, and the appointment of Dan Rudloff to the Human Rights Commission. So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Do you really want me to recognize you on this, Joe?
I appreciate it, Your Honor.
Yeah, excuse me just a minute, Commissioner Denning has something to say about this one?
Yes, but a couple of little things to this commission.
Are you getting some stares out there?
I know, I'm really not raising up.
And I'm kicking you.
Some excellent apartments, Your Honor.
That's all you got.
You thought, you thought I was going to say something about Watheta, I know.
I know. Well, I noticed that she showed up almost on the front row, too. Three of these appointments are reappointments, Watheta Buford, and Matt Edwards, and Clay Smalley. One is a new appointment, and I saw him here. I thought, there he is, sitting behind Watheta, Dan Rudloff, who's agreed to come on board and help us as we look through our Human Rights Commission ordinance, and that will be helpful in providing some good insight in that area. So that's my recommendation, and if you want to vote them down, that's up to y'all, but I think we're all right here. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Municipal order 2014-157.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2014-35 for the Sloan Convention Center restroom fixture replacement from Carter Douglas Company LLC of Russellville, Kentucky, in the amount of $40,000. So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Fable.
We strive to maintain a modern and adequate convention center. One of the things we do is focus on the small things also. One of those small things we're doing tonight is replacing the fixtures in the facility. You can easily give an appearance of an aged facility, but we went out to bid, initial bid came in at 52K, which was more than we had budgeted. Michael, in his role, negotiated a reduction from 52 to 40, making it affordable. We're here to ask your approval. This is a little out of sequence, usually it goes to the convention center, then to you, but because of timing, we're asking your approval first. Michael is here, if you have any questions.
Any other comments or questions?
Just one comment quick.
Yes, sir.
And when the city manager appointed Mr. Grubbs to kind of be the overseer of the Sloan Convention Center, it has brought about a tremendous change in visibility to our convention center that we've never had before. And the city manager made the right choice, and Mike Grubbs, in my opinion, has done an outstanding job. He keeps us informed of what's going on, where the money is going, and I appreciate what he's doing.
I think that goes for all of us here. Thank you, Mike. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson? Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-02 for banquet smallwares for the Sloan Convention Center from Stafford Smith Incorporated of Bay City, Michigan, and Sam Till &amp; Son Incorporated of Farmingdale, New York, in a total amount of $55,619.60.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febow.
Have you ever been at a wedding at the convention center? I wanted to know what all those things were that were heating the food up and putting the coffee in. That's all called smallware, and that gets worn out. We're here tonight to ask you to approve the replacement of much of the smallware at the convention center. I went out to bid, it's Michael's recommendation that we bifurcate the bid between the companies listed there, one from Michigan, the other from Long Island, New York. Michael is here, if you have any questions?
Comments or questions?
We did not have any local bids.
Thank you, sir.
But we gave them the opportunity to bid, though, right? That's all.
Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-159.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of tasers and related accessories for the police department from Gulf State Distributors of Montgomery, Alabama, in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febow.
One of the newer technology that's proven to be effective in police work is the use of tasers. They last roughly seven to 10 years, ours are about that or older. Doug has come up with a three-year replacement program to turn over the total fleet in a three-year period. Tonight, we're here to ask for the first part of that, to replace 30 tasers. These are proprietary with Gulf States. And Doug is here, if you have any questions about his three-year program or the procurement tonight.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-160.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of in-car cameras for the police department from Cobain Technologies Incorporated of Houston, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $176,000.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Febow.
Another one of our multi-year police programs is to replace in-car cameras. We're here tonight to ask your permission to replace or to, to install 12 new, for the 12 new vehicles you bought last week, and to replace 30. We have the money. Doug is here, if you have any questions?
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-161.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of additional police vehicle equipment under bid number 2014-18 from Law Enforcement Supply of Marietta, Georgia, Truckers Lighthouse of Nashville, Tennessee, and On-Duty Depot of Owensboro, Kentucky, in a total amount of $50,497.92.
So move.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip, Mr. Febow.
Those much-needed vehicle, police vehicles that you purchased last month, 12 additional ones, also need to be outfitted and taken from a car into what is essentially a moving command post and as well as an officer's office. We do that by installing certain things in each car. We're here tonight to ask you to honor a prior bid at the same price that will allow us to outfit the, these new cars. Again, Doug is here, if you have any questions?
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-162.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-04 for Cisco SmartNet annual renewal from JVK Network Consulting of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $36,378.92.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, Mr. Febow.
We use the Cisco SmartNet product to help us drive our data collection and usage in the city. That needs to have a maintenance contract. We went out to bid, we received six bids. A local provider, JVK, is the lowest bid. We recommend approval. Lynn Hartley is here, IT officer, if you have any questions?
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-163.
Municipal order authorizing software subscription services from New World Systems in the amount of $99,285 for fiscal year 2015.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, Mr. Febow.
Thank you, Mayor. We're here tonight to ask you to approve the annual maintenance on our, what is known as our enterprise software. This is the software that Jeff uses in finance, Mike uses in personnel, Brent uses in, for neighborhoods. It's, it's the main software of, of the city. Thanks to Lynn's crisp negotiating skills, we're looking at only a 1% increase in this year's maintenance contract. Again, Lynn is here, if you have any questions. That's about $887 increase, which is pretty good.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2014-22.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 54.33 acres from agriculture to single-family residential to public and floodplain located between Dishman Lane and Cavemil Road, and 4.12 acres fronting Cavemil Road between Cavemil Road and Dishman Lane, from agriculture to general business and floodplain, presently owned by Friends of the Lost River Incorporated, Western Kentucky University, and Warren County Fiscal Court.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, Mr. Febow.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Hunter is here, if you have any questions given this rezoning request.
Any comments or questions? I see Friends of Lost River are here. Mr. Coats, thank you for coming. I know you've been in this room many times, you probably didn't want to come back, but appreciate you being here. And Ms. Landston is director at Lost River Cave. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Resolution number 2014-1.
Resolution expressing support of bid to host the Regional Neighborhood Network Conference.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febow.
What makes, in my opinion, the city one of the better service organizations that I've seen is its focus on providing services through the neighborhood. We do this through Karen Foley's part of Neighborhood and Community Services, and we're here tonight to ask you to allow us to compete to host this RNNC, the Regional Neighborhood Network Conference. We held this back in 1999. We're one of 18 who has such a neighborhood department, and they're in five different states. We are going to the conference again this year in Richmond, and we're going, we want to compete to host the conference. Karen is here, if you have any questions about our intent. Past conferences required us to contribute $5,000. That may not be necessary. This time, we're planning on applying through money through tourism as well as local hosting possibility. Again, Karen is here, if you have any questions?
Comments or questions? Stayed up awful late for us, Karen, appreciate it. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-164.
Municipal order authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant application with the Federal Transit Administration for federal fiscal year 2015, federal transportation assistance under the Section 5307 program.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Williams, Mr. Febow.
Isn't it nice to be told if you apply, we'll give you the money? Tonight, we're here to ask permission to apply and then to accept approximately $12,204,000 on the, from the Federal Transit Administration to help us with our bus system. We have to provide a, a match for that. It's about $317,000 of our money as well as other in-kind. Big Brent is here, if there's any questions about the program as well as people from community access of Southern Kentucky.
His brother's here, too, isn't he?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, little Brent.
Does, does Big Brent have anything to add to tonight? Other than the daggers you're shooting at Mr. Febow for calling him Big Brent? Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-165.
Municipal order authorizing payment to the Warren County Property Evaluation Administrator for fiscal year 2015.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Denning, Mr. Febow.
One of our ongoing, long-term collaborations with Warren County is for them to do property tax assessments. It's a function that very few people covet. I don't think, right?
That's true.
Okay, so that's done by Warren County, and we pay them $50,000 to do it. And you know, that's quite a bargain, and we recommend your approval.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Brandsteiner does a great job for us, thanks, sir. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-166.
Municipal order approving an exchange of information agreement with the Kentucky Department of Revenue and authorizing city employees to request, receive, and provide information.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Febow.
The citizens out there should be, take some comfort in that tax information that's given to the city of Bowling Green as well as to the state is fairly controlled as to who has access. Tonight, we're here to do what's called an exchange of information between Kentucky Department of Revenue and city government for the exchange of tax information between the two agencies. This agreement outlines who at the city level has access to information and vice versa for the state. Jeff is here, if you have any questions?
Are there any changes? Did we have this agreement previously, didn't we?
We've had it. They said, I tell you the truth, I can go back and compare and words for words. They said there's some minor changes, that's why they want us to resign it. We did add a new person to the authorized city, Sean Weeks out of Jeff's office. We added him to the list as well.
There's only two or three people that get that. The city commissioners do not get what other levels tax revenues is. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-167.
Municipal order approving lease agreement with T Squares LLC doing business at T Bayou for lease of a portion of the public sidewalk located in front of 906 State Street.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Febow.
We've, we've been approached by T Bayou to allow them to put four tables and 16 chairs out in front of their business on the upper part of the square.